I call to order the September 27, 2021 business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. I'm going to ask Vice President to lead us in the pledge.
Budget allegiance to the flag of the United States and America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, endless.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call roll. This is Bates.
Present.
This is Bolton.
Present.
This is Bowers. Here. Mr. Lindy. Mr. Messer.
Present.
Mr. Morosky. President Jones, here. And I just wanted to share that Mr. Lindy will be here late, a little late. He advised us that he'd be a little late for this meeting, so he will be in attendance. Okay, I need a motion for a 48-hour waiver to revise the agenda to add a board matters item, sort of board and metro administration business community relationship with Cincinnati City Council. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The agenda is revised as presented. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests. For five minutes, please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you should want a direct response to any questions that you might have. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting September 13th, the business meeting September 13th. That's it.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, Ms. Bolton, please present the September 15, 2021 Budget Finance Growth Committee. Before you present, I think you should know that most of us have not read the minutes because we just got it.
Right, so, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I will go deeply into it for that reason, but we do have items that I think are important to at least get out there and sorry for the lateness of it. First, before I start though, I want to welcome our president back from her absence. We're all thinking of you while you were gone and glad that you're here with us tonight. This, the Finance Committee or Budget Finance and Growth Committee met last week on a different day than normal, largely because of the Jewish holiday. And normal folks were there. And it started interestingly because a member of City Council had suggested a proposed motion to know what and how we were planning on spending our COVID monies part of the Recovery Act. That motion didn't get a second, but indeed it does show that there is interest throughout the city as to how we all can probably understand each other's efforts as we all come out of, pray God, this COVID experience. We did not take a report from the preschool promise folks, but we did have an item of business from our own preschool folks, especially as it pertained to the preschool workforce development council and the need for being able to interpret that charter in a way that makes sense and gives people the kind of direction that they need. The committee decided to ask the internal auditor to review it after a conversation with the Director Brooks so that there could be some outlining if you could and be possible anyway that we might have a better understanding of what they can and cannot do and who should be doing what. So we look forward to that report for next month. Then we had a transportation debrief, especially pertaining to our metro experience and the CPS efforts regarding the restoration of our extra routes. The superintendent reported that she's been working on lining up a meeting with Metro. Also reported that she does believe that there is, according to our own legal counsel, the capacity to have such routes since we've had them for a number of decades. But rightfully so, Mr. Member Messer said that it's important to find out more about what those limits might be and indeed to find out if Metro has been contacted by certain liaison folks from the federal government regarding the legality of those extra routes. Also, it is pretty obvious that what we need besides clarity and legal counsel advising us is that we want to even reach out to the federal government, Senators Brown and Portman, and using our own liaison person, former Ohio Senator, Senate member Kearney, to try and find out what those sorts of legal federal issues are and if there's help from other sources in the government. Mr. Messer also pointed out again his interest in seeing if it's possible to have more of our seventh and eighth grade kids be on yellow buses and indeed it was reported that they're looking into that to see if there is capacity to do that even as soon as perhaps second semester. Then there are a number of charts, as you can see, regarding ridership and a couple of things to draw attention to because again, just as you do have an opportunity to study this and we get this on the record. There's a list of our high schools as well as a handful of other high schools that are not ours that are being reported regarding the number of unique students by school by time period. The time periods are broken down into the morning, on the afternoon, and after 6:30 PM, and it's done by every school. It's surprising how few riders there are in the non-CPS schools, something to perhaps take a second or third look at as we move on. We're also expecting more data analysis from Metro to be shared with us. And we did ask the question, when will we no longer be so dependent upon Metro's data and be able to independently have our own data and most particularly the data that talks about the impact that the Metro plan eliminating the extra routes has impacted our instructional day, has impacted our staff days, impacted as well perhaps the safety or risk. So I think that's an area where the administration felt that they could be putting some very important salient issues together. Then there's another couple of charts that are talking about average ridership by school and that's a school day and utilization by school. Some of these, you've seen a couple of these charts in a previous meeting, I think, within the town. And then interestingly enough, the mean time of time or the amount of time on a mean schedule as to how long it takes our kids to get home, from home to school. There's a lot of questions there that we want to be able to ask and have answered, but you'll see these charts on page five talks about the distribution of travel time, distribution students using Metro, and it talks about median versus mean and what have you. But then also it's broken down by our high schools as to the amount of minutes. And these are charts that I think anecdotally might seem less correct than many of us would think, but indeed it does indicate some more questions that can be answered and asked about that. Besides the efforts on the metro piece regarding transportation, we also have been asking as part of the growth effort enrollment by building and Assistant Superintendent Murphy was able to present those charts and not surprisingly, we, like every time somebody gives us some information, we always want more. And we did suggest that it would be great to see building capacity. It was alarming in some instances to see the amount of absenteeism and also to figure out that many of our students and families don't necessarily return to school on the first day, but come a little bit later in the very early part of September. But we have that enrollment data by school and that appears because it's in landscape, it appears in the last few pages. So I think that will be of interest to folks as you look at the last couple of pages. And then beyond that, we did something that we asked the administration to do some months ago and they are fast and furiously doing it and it's very helpful. And I know those people have been on the board for a long time will recall this. Indeed, we are graphically depicting the home addresses, if you will, as to where our student enrollment is coming from by every school. And that would pertain to our elevens as well as our high schools, our K-12 buildings and the like. And I would encourage the board to take a few minutes to look at those graphic depictions. And that leads us to talking about, is there a way to geographically and programmatically start to organize our district in a way that is more financially sustainable and equitably distributed in program and effort and choice? And when we talked about that, the superintendent was adamant about the fact that choice is one of our hallmarks. Mr. Messer was adamant about the fact that this kind of big thing has to start with a charter and then is directed by the administration with far as community engagement and the like. And my point in part was much of this is stuff we've been working on for a number of years. What then follows is our normal and well done, if I'd say so. On behalf of the Treasurer's Office, the monthly financial report updates, including the grants piece that we always find kind of interesting, as well as the CPS preschool expansion, and I submit and hope for approval. The final thing besides all of that is something that our own staff put together for one of our meetings with Metro and it shows the, it's in landscape as well, all of our high schools. It shows the enrollment, but then also shows the numbers of economically disadvantaged. And this was a case that we were trying to make to Metro and I appreciate the staff putting that together. So, sorry for the lateness, but it's a huge report and hopefully it will be of value to you.
Okay, do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bates first, we'll just go down the line.
Yes, and I was unable to make this meeting. I was in a pediatrician's office with two of my grandsons who had appointments for urgent, urgent appointments for illnesses that came up that day. My daughter was working and I was the one available and I didn't get out in time for the meeting, so I hope I have an excuse to absence for this one. But anyway, I, there's a lot of information here and we just got it and I, you know, I have some real questions about how we're going to proceed with some of this information. And it's, you know, I'm not sure if this is a time and place to ask all of these questions. Again, regrettably, I could have asked him if I was at the meeting, but it was not possible. So I would either abstain and ask for some time to disseminate this information a little bit better as a member of the committee. I'm, would not be ready to accept, not that I, you know, I am opposed to anything in here. I just haven't had the time to, you know, to redo it.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's a very reasonable request and I would even suggest perhaps some of these actions that are listed within it are, would be delayed till the next reading, but I think this information needed to start to at least get in that ether and that circle. So as we talk, I guess so people are concerned, but I would submit that the actions, and that's why I didn't list any of those, defer to the next month for the actions. I think that makes sense, but we do want this information out there for all to see. Thank you.
Mr. Messer?
Yes, I agree. You know, to get something in the middle of the afternoon, many are working, many are teaching their family members, et cetera. You know, it's our job to go through these and make sure that things are in there correctly before we put a vote on it. The one thing I will call out, of course, the, circle several things that I think are listed a little differently than I experienced, so we can deal with those later, but the one topic that's called Meridian, I think it should be clear, that's one member's, that was all really from one member. And just to kind of give background, this is a discussion on what we're going to do with this district. I think everybody believes we've got to evolve and grow. You know, the name admittedly is a name Ms. Bolton uses with it. As we talked about in the meeting, this is, this is in the weeds of a much higher, much broader conversation that really needs to start with a charter so that we all are fully unified, that our community fully understands the work that this district would be looking at going forward. And I think this fits very closely with the strategic planning process. One thing that I brought up was a question, you know, and I think at least from my perspective, I agree with what answers I heard. The work that would be in how we evolve into something different than we are today, I believe that's led by our administration. And so, you know, my, my, my approach then, I actually wasn't aware that we were getting kind of detailed plans. And I think we each could come forth with detailed plans and back those back and forth or we could raise it up, have a much broader conversation and then structure the work appropriately. One thing that was brought up though was, this is such a big delta. Is this something that should wait until we see a new superintendent? And I personally think that's true, that, you know, it seemed like that was the consensus in the room. And so I hesitate to put in the minutes all of these details which are, you know, I think they're, they're a person's board members, which is very valid perspective, but if they're in here, I feel like they are then representative of the committee. And in no way did I think we should enter into a world where we were giving documents, laying out a project that we hadn't even scoped yet. But it did continue, the conversation continued. I just don't believe that should be part of the minutes that we're approving as if we're somehow giving validation or approval to something that wasn't produced with the board, with our public in an organized process. So that would be my hesitation with how this section on page seven is listed in the minutes. Of course, then I would like to review the rest of the items as well at some point.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Messer, before we move on? Ms. Bowers, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, I just had a comment, Board Member Bolton, I'm just eager and I'd like to commend you for having the discussion with the Director of Early Childhood regarding the preschool workforce development evaluation. I think that's key in our early childhood with paralleling and making sure that students are, you know, receiving the, the, the level of education at that level or intervention or interaction with those teachers and that those things are happening at the level so that their students can be ready for kindergarten, which is the whole point of all this preschool promise information. But I'm eager to find out from the Director Brooks, how to move forward. It says that they're looking for a board's guidance. Is it our board or the preschool promise board?
The, the charter is one that was produced as a part of Cincinnati Public Schools, but it serves both our preschools as well as the private vendors as well.
Okay.
But the charter is born frankly of the board's action and it's basically began as sort of an alliance with our teachers' unions and ASME and then also finding out how we could facilitate and expand training. But in that effort, every mission starts to have some freeze, if you will, and that's what they want to get cleared of.
Okay, so I'm looking forward to seeing what that would look like. Thank you.
Okay, I too just received it like late this afternoon and I did have conversation with staff and I think it's really, there's a lot of meaty stuff in here and I think we would do it injustice if we approved it. I think we, Ms. Bolton, if it's okay with you, we could defer for a second reading to approve it.
Oh, absolutely. I have, I have no, as a matter of fact, I agree with what everybody has said. I would only add one caveat is that much of what is seen as Meridian is the following, and I think we made this point in the meeting, is really the continuation of things that we've been caring about, which is.
I, I was actually going to.
Vision 2020 of finding ways to.
Yeah, I, I don't think.
So that's, it's not anything that's brand new necessarily, but I think we can defer, but we do need these, this information at least to be available and the, and the conversation to continue, especially trying to make sure that we have a higher profile on the transportation issues that, that are facing us. So yes, I'm more than happy to wait for the acceptance of the minutes to the next month.
Okay, I, I think like I said, there is a lot of detail. I think specific though to the Meridian plan, I do, I was around when, when we talked about it. I still don't know how we came up with the name Meridian plan. I don't know that. The other piece to it is there is, there have been lots of things that have changed or impacted our strategic plan. So I think that there's so much meat and so much content to this, I think this is worthy of a different type of, of conversation, not, you know, not to get rid of everything that's in here, but maybe spend some time, I'm actually suggesting that we might want to spend some time at our upcoming retreat and have the, have the committee do an overview and, and have administration kind of look at the strategic plan and how it relates to what we're doing now, what are the changes, what might impact the Meridian plan, any concerns they might have or anything. And that we approach it from that angle rather than trying to say, let's approve it as is because we, we've gone through a lot and I think that is worthy of that and so if, if, if we're okay with that, then if we put it on there, we can, we have to give some time to it.
I think that's.
Yeah, so, yeah, that would be my suggestion. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I love that suggestion and maybe we just talk about the future CPS plan. Because, you know, I think to your point, if you label it something, it becomes very specific to what, you know, you know, if somebody names it that, it's kind of very specific where we're talking about how we evolve the district in the future. And so, you know, I think, I think just talking about the future of CPS plan, A, what's the right time, just given the transition that we're in, and then, then what's the right process? And then what are we going to all line on in the form of a charter, what that looks like, I think would be crucial.
Okay, great. So if we're, we're in agreement.
I welcome that suggestion. I think it's fabulous. And just an old social studies teacher, the word Meridian happened because unfortunately people were talking about hemispheres. And when we were talking about hemispheres, north and south of the equator, so to speak, the social studies teacher and me said, no, actually what you're really talking about are meridians because it runs north-south and that'll all become clear.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
That clarification. Okay, so we are going to not vote, we're going to defer that for approval at the next meeting. We will add it to our agenda for the meeting and we need to give clear direction to administration as soon as possible about kind of what we're looking for. So we'll, we'll work on that. We'll work on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, alrighty. Interim Superintendent, please introduce our presentation for this evening.
Yes, good evening. It is with great enthusiasm that I introduce Dr. Carlos Blair, Principal of Western Hills High School. He will be doing our presentation on DPS is Bright School Highlight.
Thank you so much for the introduction, board members. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I also want to thank Superintendent Ahmad for giving me this opportunity. One of the things that we've done at Western Hills University High School from an academic standpoint is increase the number of accelerated courses that we are offering. We want to give our students an opportunity to excel not only now, but in the future. So if I can talk a little bit about that, for example, we added AP courses, American History and Biology. We also, or, we also added College Credit Plus, Anatomy and Physiology, and we also added an advanced accelerated course, American Government. So again, we want to be competitive, we want our students to have every opportunity to look at post-secondary options and be successful. We're very, very excited about our new partnership with the IVWNECA Electrical Training Center that's located in Western Hills University, that's West, I'm sorry, that's located in Western Hills, not far from Western Hills University High School. And this particular program offers Western Hills as well as Dater students an opportunity for career tech education. They will have an opportunity, this is a senior-only course, but they will have an opportunity to not only take a course at this particular training site, but also earn 8,000 hours of paid-on-the-job training and 900 hours of related classroom training. So we actually took a tour, took a tour of this particular training site and we were very excited to open up that opportunity for our students. These students who participate in this program can also earn a certificate as well as an inside journeyman or wireman and are qualified to perform all aspects of the electrical trade. So this is huge for our students. As you well know, electricians are very much needed. I am not going to touch anything that has high voltage and our students are, our students are going to be prepared and we're looking to grow this program so that they can get high-paying jobs when with, when we're talking about new construction, they can be those students onsite building those generators, installing those electrical generators. As you also know, with the big push for internet access, the fiber optics, though, our students will be able to install that fiber optic cabling. So this is a huge, huge win for our students as well as our community. I also want to take a little bit of time to talk about some of the people who will help our students in the future. To introduce our new staff, our new staff include Jonathan Kincaid, science teacher, Adam Stockfish, he is our science teacher, Summer Kramer, she is an intervention specialist, Julie Lassio-Rose for Spanish, she's going to be teaching Spanish class, Amanda Paisley, math teacher, Kate Ryder is our school psychologist, Cory Parker comes to us and he is joining as a resource coordinator, Diana Laletta is our ESL teacher, William McAllen is our new counselor, Blaine Beach is our public safety instructor, Cameron Johnson is our new social worker, Molly Bayer is our new reading specialist, and Courtney Fox is our new math specialist. So with these new additions, we again are looking to push our students forward and help them excel. In addition to that, we're very excited to offer golf. This is something that we have worked with our, with my athletic director, Phil O'Neal. He was interested in giving our students opportunities outside of what they would normally get and through his efforts, we were able to add golf. So again, we want to build this program, put our students in a situation where they can excel also on that golf court, golf course rather. Also recently, our seniors participated in a scholarship fair, it was held at Union Terminal. I'm type principal, I love to take pictures, I like to see our students excelling and getting opportunities. Our students were very excited, they came back, they were bragging about how many colleges and universities and job opportunities they were able to make and connect with. They spent a lot of time just talking to me, so I just kind of sat down and listened to their stories and it made me feel good from a principal standpoint to see they're in level, the high level of enthusiasm. So they talked about the number of applications they completed, they talked about their current transcripts and their GPA, and that's what we're about. We're just trying to make sure that students are well-prepared, not only now, but in the future. And the last portion of my presentation is about our Hispanic students. A couple of years ago, we had about maybe 10 or less Hispanic students, now we're at 300. Now we're at 300 plus. Our, so our Hispanic population has really grown and we are embracing them and we want them to feel welcome. Uh, anytime we have an opportunity to celebrate them, we take pictures of them. We post them on our bulletins. We push, we post, uh, all of those pictures also on our monitors throughout the school to celebrate them, to help them feel welcome and embraced and appreciated for all of their contributions from a cultural standpoint. So this concludes my presentation. And again, I want to really thank the board as well as interim superintendent for giving me an opportunity to just kind of boast a little bit about the west side and talk about some of the positive things going on at Western Hills University High School. Any questions?
Thank you. Board members, uh, we'll start with Ms. Bowers and then Mr. Messer. Yes, thank you. I'm excited hearing about golf. I'm just grinning. You probably could see it in my eyes. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, this is a great presentation. I like hearing about the increase in advanced placement and C C T classes and even the accelerated academics. Do, question number one, are the AA classes rolled back to into junior high classes? You got to push. The voice, it looked like a speaker. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Can you hear me now? Good. All right. So, um, our student, our junior high students are actually taking some accelerated like prep courses uh, with the intent for them to be prepared by the time that they are in the ninth grade to be ready for accelerated courses. It's really about maturity and just kind of prepping them with study skills, prepping them with organization skills so that when they reach the high school level, they are ready for those, um, you know, rigorous courses.
Excellent. And the, and congratulations on the IBEW NC, N E C A. Uh, that's in my neck of the woods. I, I see that building all the time. I live on the west side. I'm glad that we have that collaboration. Um, and even the senior and the paid training. I heard you said that they could get paid for that during the senior year. Is there any collaboration? And I know Cincinnati Bell collaborates properly with TAF, but do we have that connection with them? You mentioned biotics. And I know that's through Cincinnati Bell. Is there a collaboration there with that post-training or post-graduation, uh, is my inquiry?
Not at the present time, but I would definitely entertain connecting with, uh, Cincinnati Bell to continue to help our students out.
Very good. Congratulations on a successful start of the year.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Messer, we'll just go down the line.
Yeah, thank you for that update. It's always a pleasure to, uh, I just love hearing your voice, first of all.
Thank you.
So I mean, you should really think about going to the radio or something. Um, so I know the kids appreciate that in the building. Um, but you know, I, I love what you're doing in the workforce development piece. Um, anybody who's tried to hire electrician lately, good luck. I think I'm on my third one, just trying to get somebody to come into my house. Uh, and I already know what, you know, what's the bill's going to look like. So, you know, um, I just think, thinking about, you know, careers and new and different ways to expose them. They might be business owners and everything else and beyond. So I think that's so exciting. Um, getting to attend your graduation. I saw the great diversity that exists there at your school and I think it, uh, was beautiful to see the families there and the names and all that stuff. But I love what you're doing there for the Hispanic, uh, Awareness Month. Um, and I'm just curious, uh, so many great things are happening. Like what, what are the one or two things that are keeping you up at night? Just did this. Um, the world be a better place there at Western Hills.
Yeah. So it's funny that you mentioned that. Uh, one of the things that's really keeping me up in particular is ensuring that our Hispanic population crosses the stage. Uh, because we are next door right to Dater, next door to Dater. And, uh, we noticed, we were looking at some data, talked to the principal, Ms. Madison, and there are some struggles in terms of after the students finish their SLI classes and they go into the mainstream courses, that level of support, um, is not necessarily there. So we are concerned with that and we're looking for ways to be creative and really connect with those students. A lot of it is based on relationships. So, um, the relationships that we have with my ESOL department hat, they have with the students, it's really strong and we're hoping with that, then with some additional supports that we are receiving from, uh, Student Services, uh, we're working with Patty in particular. We want to make sure that not only do the students come into Western Hills, but that they cross that finish line and graduate. So that's the biggest thing. Um, and then some of the testing, uh, in terms of map testing, some of the assessments, just making sure that they are all translated, just making sure that when we communicate with the Hispanic families that they feel welcome when they come in, that they have a clear understanding of what the expectations are from an academic standpoint.
One more reason why we're glad you're there.
Thank you. That was a wonderful response.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Yes, I, I, I think it's very exciting, uh, that you have the IBEW, uh, collaboration. But, you know, looking at our high schools and we have, uh, Woodward on the other side of town with, you know, a pretty extensive construction sciences program. Uh, is that something that you've been considering? Is this, uh, partnership with IBEW kind of, uh, yeah, the, the, it was a great collaboration, but are you looking to expand that to include other courses in construction sciences? Uh, I think it would be really ideal to have one of each on each side of town. So what are your plans or have you gotten to that point yet?
We haven't gotten to that point yet, but, um, I'm definitely willing to entertain that thought. I think that it, that it definitely would benefit the students on the west side of town if we were to expand. Um, so far, what we've been doing is collaborating with Woodward on some occasions in terms of just utilizing resources that they have, some of their connections, but we haven't really extended it beyond that. Uh, but I, I agree with you. I think that given some of the students or giving students on the west side of town options like, uh, what you spoke about would be good and beneficial. Does that answer your question?
So what kind of support would you need to expand that kind of programming?
Um, so I, I'm big on planning, so we would need to have like some help planning sessions. I would have to get my teachers involved. Currently we have public service, my public safety, I'm sorry. Um, so I would get my public safety teacher involved. I would also get my E M T teacher involved. Um, and just as a, as a group, begin to brainstorm different options. Um, also connecting with Woodward, I have some experience with. Uh, so I can talk to Ms. Wallace, talk to some of the staff to see like what it would take for us to potentially, um, add some additional programming. Obviously I would need some assistance from central office if we were to make that happen. Okay.
Ms. Bolton?
Always glad to see Dr. Blair. Uh, I know that he was part of the, uh, team that initiated the new tech at Aiken and then was deeply needed over at West High and has been doing a wonderful job there. My brother graduated from Mustang Country, so I'm, I'm all in favor of it. Thrilled that you're talking at the same amount of time about college prep, if you will, and career prep. The, these are the same lanes. Neither one is more or less important than the other. The community is expecting both of those lanes to be open and wide for our kids. So it's great about the relationship with, with the electrician folks and great about expanding the college opportunities. I am fascinated by the, and it's happening at my alma mater, uh, Aiken, the arrival, if you will, of immigrants and refugees. Uh, it's my view, if I recall the growth over time, Ms. Bates will remind me too if this is wrong. Our biggest growth besides preschool in a number of these years has been the immigrant and refugee, uh, population. And I think the people that were thinking about this 10 years ago, especially on the west side and now also on the east side, really got us ready for this. And I would expect too that what's happened on our southern border and also what's happened, uh, in Afghanistan. And since I believe Cincinnati is still a, a safe haven, if you will, uh, for refugees and immigrants, according to the State Department, I would be imagining that we are going to be absorbing, um, more than a couple of thousand new students. And I know that they, it's, 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 uh, hard to perform all the support that is needed, but once they get their legs, so to speak, they are really helping save our, our, our schools. So I, I'm thrilled to hear more and more about what we're doing about that. And this is an international school district as well as a P K sixteen district. And you seem to be leading the way. To Ms. Bates' point, what is it that you would need, uh, very quickly, right now, next year, regarding facilities, if you were to expand more of the, um, career effort? Because that's one of the things you might not have in common with, uh, Woodward, which has those sorts of facilities.
Um, it's, so since Dater is like literally behind us, I don't know if there's any more capacity for us to build on that particular, uh, on that campus. Um, yeah, unless we were to extend beyond, behind date, Dater's, uh, campus. I don't know. That, that's, that could be an option. So one of the things that I would have to do is work with the community because the community, so from my meetings with the community, um, they are already kind of concerned with the number of students who are attending Dater and West High collaboratively. Uh, it's a huge group of students. So to expand, you know, we would have to do some community service in terms, well, some community conversations rather, uh, to kind of prep them, to let them know if that's the direction that the board pleases to go and the, under the direction of, uh, interim superintendent. If that's something that we want to entertain, again, the planning sessions, sitting down, what was, what would it look like? What would be the specialized programming? Um, how would it benefit students? What type of funds would need to be made available? Um, I'm open to all of those conversations. Um, but yeah, I definitely will want to get a committee together to really kind of move that work forward.
I appreciate that. The, the other piece of that is that when we did the big Mercy move, it's for Gamble, if we'll all recall. And I know somebody over there in the red jacket that knows this and she was personally responsible, I think, for that. Um, at any rate, the people on the west side said, well, you can do what you need to do about Mercy and Gamble, but we want to see a west side plan. And they, they was, they were always talking about West High and Dater. That don't forget about them as we do this other. So I think that's great. It also speaks to our need for our career stuff to have more of an opportunity to interface. Like just because it's at Woodward doesn't mean you only have to go to Woodward. Maybe there's ways that in this virtual world, we can have more sharing, uh, of staff and, and programming. But so appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you so much. And the last thing I will say, um, not only will the students have access to these, uh, that they're training, the facility, the training center itself, but there is a lot of money to be made on the side. That's one of the things that the, uh, the personnel at the Electrical Training Center emphasized. Like a lot of the side hustles that the electricians have, because going back to Mr. Messer's point, um, there's such a need. Um, the students can make, you know, a, a lot of money within a short period of time once they obtain these credentials. I just wanted to add that little point in.
Okay. Okay. Um, hi, Dr. Blair. Always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you.
Um, I ditto what my board colleagues have said, but I'm going to say something on a little, on a lighter side. Um, I noticed you have quite a few new staff, new teachers. One of those teachers, and she's going to be mad because I mentioned her name, but I'm going to say it. And there's a reason. Her name is Amanda Paisley. I've known Amanda since she was in the ninth grade. She was a softball player and I was a softball coach. So when you go back and see her, I never, I've known her since ninth grade. Never in a million years would I have thought she would have taught high school. Never. But here she is and she's still a tiny little thing, you know? But I saw her a couple of weeks ago and she told me she was at West High. She loves it, loves it. So the next time you see her, you ask her, um, uh, the, the, ask her about how, if, if, when I was working with her as a softball player, if her fastball improved, her drop ball and her change-up. Ask her that. She'll talk to you about softball, but yeah.
I definitely will.
But yeah, I saw that. Uh, yeah, she's very happy with where she is. So yeah. Well, nice. Nice to see you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Always like to talk about my softball days, but reminds me of my younger days. I'm old now. Got bad knees. Okay. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings. We are convening this video, uh, conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Consistent with the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the hearing of the public on any single issue and will exercise the right to do so if needed. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive, provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic and your contact information, should you want a direct response to any questions. This request is consistent with board protocol and we appreciate your compliance. We reserve the right to not permit you to speak if you do not comply. Again, each speaker will have two minutes and they only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Thank you. How many speakers?
We have seven speakers.
Thank you.
Our first speaker this evening is Aubria Drummons, followed by Leslie Mooney, followed by Anne Shulley. Go ahead, Ms. Drummons.
Hey, good morning. I'm con, um, logging on to discuss-
Uh, please unmute. She is unmuted. We can't, we can't hear you.
We can see you, Ms. Drummons, but not hear you. Maybe you want to check your microphone. We'll come back to you in one, one second. Uh, our next speaker is Leslie Mooney, followed by Anne Shulley, followed by, um, Ms. Drummons. Go ahead, Ms. Mooney.
Hello. Hi. How is everyone tonight? Thank you all.
We can't hear you. There you go.
All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you for your prompt feedback this afternoon, um, interim superintendent Amat, that you are working with Principal Siple uh, at Fairview Clifton German Language School on the issue that I'm going to speak about this evening. As the chair and one of the parent representatives to Fairview Clifton's L S D M C, I consider one of our primary roles, uh, to be to understand our school's budget and how the decisions inherent in that budget directly impact, either positively or otherwise, the experience of our students and families. This is my primary concern with the potential of losing one or more of our primary grade teachers this semester that we would adversely impact students at a critical juncture in a time of unprecedented upheaval in the lives of our children, upheaval that has led to severe mental health issues, staggering academic setbacks and a fairly drastic reduction in district enrollment, that we would put the students and families in the situation of having to change or lose their teacher, change or lose the students in their class that they have finally established relationships with just to meet the number provided for on paper is staggering. I understand budgeting and what the contractual agreements say is allowable, but I implore you of all times to make exceptions and prioritize the stability of the experience for all of our students. That time is now. So I appreciate all the decisions you're making to regain our place as a district destination. And I hope that you can see that this is one such student-centered decision that has a direct impact on the success of the district's strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anne Shulley, followed by Aubria Drummons, followed by Ozzy Davis. Go ahead, Ms. Shulley.
Hi. Can, can all of you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you. My name's Anne Shulley and I would like to echo everything that Ms. Mooney just said. I too am a parent at Fairview and cannot urge you strongly enough not to make any additional changes. And that's not just at Fairview, that's across the board. My son is a first grader and the difference between this year and last year is night and day because he is in a classroom with a teacher that he loves and he is in a routine. And to now disrupt the routines of so many students across the district simply to meet numbers required by a contract is really not putting the students first. These students, especially the younger students, have been through so much in the last almost two years now and they are finally getting some- two years now and they are finally getting some stability. They are finally starting to excel. They are finally starting to make up for some of the learning loss that has occurred during COVID. And to now force both of them and teachers to make changes midway through the first semester is really going to be devastating and it is just going to further the loss that the kids have already experienced in learning, in social development, in friendship development, in learning how to be in a classroom. So I strongly, strongly urge you to consider taking into account that maybe this year is the year to just go ahead and accept that maybe you're not going to have as many kids in a classroom as you normally would and that that's a good thing because of COVID, because of social distancing, that is going to help allow for better precautions against COVID, particularly in elementary schools where none of the children are yet vaccinated. So I would really encourage you to think long and hard before you make any changes to the number of teachers and students in a classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aubria Drummonds, followed by Ozy Davis. Go ahead, Ms. Drummonds, we can hear you.
Okay, awesome. So I am also a Fairview parent and I'm just going to follow up with the same sentiments that Leslie and Ms. Ann have stated. Fairview cannot afford to lose additional teachers because of a contract agreement. You've promised us that our kids are going to be safe in our classrooms and you're, we're spending our kids out with a cloth around their mat, their masks to fight a trending upwards, fireling of disease and you're going to take away some of our teachers in the prime of students trying to get read, read adjusted to school. They have, they're suffering from food laws, housing laws, employment losses. They have all these other things going on and then we're going to disrupt their classroom yet once again to meet a budget need and put them in, put them in more danger. Like we said, like we said before, our students are the ones that aren't able to get vaccinated. And we're going to stuff them into rooms to accommodate, you know, a classroom size and we have money and I thought we were granted over $300 million in federal funds to assist in creativity and agility. Maybe we should use some of those fundings to create safe, less, least destructive, more academically enriching environment for our children instead of throwing them in the face of danger, trying to play, you know, I don't know what you want to call it, with our kids' health. It's a big concern for me. Not only that, we're, the issue is that we're losing students. We're losing students because of this, the same thing. Who's to say if you're going to keep putting people, stuffing children in classrooms, that more parents aren't going to decide this is unhealthy for my child and I have to get my child out of that classroom? We're going to lose students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ozy Davis, followed by Dorothy Wilson, followed by CFT President Julie Sellers. All right, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, everybody. President Jones, it's great to see you back at the helm. I'm glad your knees are moving at least that well. I know my time is short, so I'll be, I'll be quick. I just got four little points. One, I am with member Bolton in regards to the quote unquote Meridian Plan. I didn't know that you guys didn't know that was the name, but the surprise from several members tonight was kind of shocking. But I'm with a member Bolton in regards to Meridian Plan, maybe for different reasons. But as you all know, I always felt like the, the schoolhouse should be the cornerstone of the community and it cannot be such with kids being able to go all over the city. And it doesn't make financial sense. And we can talk about that more on the 16th. My second point is, I wanted to say to Carlos, a good job. I really love Carlos. He's a good kid, good Miami guy. And I hope that you all get Armon Tatum, his job, his teaching job back over at West High. That's a great brother. I know things went wrong with the football team, but I hope he gets his teaching job back. The third thing I probably will have to bring to policy, I am still not on Rockdale's LSDMC. And while at this point, I wouldn't even accept a, a, a role with Rockdale's LSDMC, it's a challenge for me to understand how the policy of three community, community members only would hold back a principal like Dr. Finney from having me on her LSDMC. If there's a person in Madisonville that loves JP Parker like I love my school that I went to, this should be a policy to get that person on the LSDMC. My final thing is, I invite you all to Rockdale's Urban Garden Community Reveal, Thursday 2:45. That, this thing is incredible. You'll see it on the news tonight. Dr. Finney was being interviewed when I was with her earlier today. Thank you, Barry County. I love you guys. Love you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Our next speaker is Dorothy Wilson, followed by Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, good evening. My name is Dorothy Wilson. Again, I'm also a member of the Fairview LSDMC and I have a son that attends school. And I'm here this evening just to say that I'm concerned about also losing staff, which then changes the numbers and ratios in the classroom. I think I'm also a public school employee also. So I think we have some really remedial challenges this year and I think we need all hands on deck. I think, you know, the, one of the most important things is a teacher-student relationship. And if we're considering this in October to all of a sudden, as our students are in a flow, to consider disrupting two grades, if not more, depending on if it's a teacher or an intervention specialist or even the parent educator. I think we need to prioritize teacher-student relationships and understand that that's one of the most important effective tools of reaching student growth. I think we are still in a pandemic. This is not the time or the year to make changes when students have established the routine and have grown to, you know, learn their schedule and be safe. You know, we've got enough trauma and crises that these students have suffered. So I ask you, please, help me with the administration and not move teachers around within school. Is that my time?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Our last speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? I would like to also welcome Carolyn Jones back this evening. You were missed for the last couple of months, but I want to talk about several things this evening. I am really happy that there were parents speaking up this evening about the cuts during TAC. Now, they were all from one school, but those impacts are across the district. There is a school across the street from Fairview where they cut it down to only one intermediate teacher for fourth grade and they will all be self-contained. And we are putting kids who are not vaccinated in classrooms that are sometimes over the, even the limits into overload situations. This should not be happening, it should not be happening at magnet schools or at neighborhood schools. Our kids have so much that they have to make up and to put them in a situation during the pandemic, it makes no sense to make these cuts now. I do know that there's a shortage of teachers, but we don't have to go as deep as what we went. And I think that the district, from my understanding, is really pushing hard to accelerate learning. But how can students be safe and be this close with the, in these close classrooms and trying to make up the learning gaps when so many students are crammed into one classroom? I know that TAC is a process that we do, but we did not, I don't believe we needed to make the cuts as deep as what we made and that it's ridiculous that we're having this much disruption at this time. The Metro Plan this last week, I received information from a FOIA request that I made to the sort of board and it came back to me as incomplete. But it really seemed from the information that I was receiving that they were really putting a lot of blame onto the district and it doesn't seem like they even want to make any kind of concessions to start layering back routes for those extra routes. Maybe every single extra route doesn't need to be reinstated, but there are many areas of Cincinnati that do need to have routes reinstated. There are still kids who are having long wait times to get to the bus. There are still kids being left outside in between routes when they have to transfer without the, that transfer showing up. There are kids who are waiting in the dark in the morning and it's, you drive and you can see kids standing room only on buses. Number one, that right now is not safe and I don't think it is, any high school should, kids should be working so hard just to get to school. That should not be the hardest part of their day is how are they going to get to school? We, and with this vaccine information that we put on, that the district implemented, we have not, CFT has not received back the MOU and they said that it's based on what the district is going to do. It's really important that we have that so that we know that we have clear communication of what the expectations are. And secondly, not only should the staff be vaccinated, but we also believe that there should be supports, we support requiring student vaccines for 16 and up, especially now with the spread of the Delta variant. We've had, in four and a half weeks, we've had over a thousand cases of positive COVID cases. Most of those have been kids and there's many teachers who have tested positive and they were vaccinated because there's too many, they're in classrooms with too many people who are not vaccinated. We should also highly encourage all students who are eligible, even if they are below age 16, to be vaccinated. From our point of view, we may lose students to open enrollment, but I'll bet you we gain many students from outside the district who want their children to be in a safe environment where the majority of people are vaccinated, there's access to testing and there's mandatory masks. The staff feels like they would be safer with these procedures in place, but with the breakthrough cases, children are getting the virus at a much higher rate and we do not know the long-term impact of having the virus dormant in their bodies. So there are so many things going on right now, but I know that we can come up with plans that are best for our staff and our students and our families. Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Thank you. Alrighty. Does anyone have any kudos? Ms. Bowers? Yes, I want to give kudos to our interim superintendent. Last Thursday, I was able to observe her along with her colleagues and representatives from Princeton School District and Witten Woods, as well as one of our students present on this platform, closing the health gaps sign, segment of Black Community State of COVID-19 in our schools. And our student from Walnut Hills, Mariah, did an excellent job representing her viewpoint, how the pandemic has affected her as a student and being, what it means to be back in, in person at school. So I want to congratulate our super interim superintendent and Mariah on the job they did representing our district. Great. Thank you. Any other kudos? Okay. Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, I have several retirements to announce this evening from our certificated staff. Della M. Goodwin Stebrin, early childhood manager, Beverly Award teacher. From our civil service staff, Michael Ewing Carpenter. So we congratulate these professionals on their retirement and wish them the best in the future and thank them for taking care of our children.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, moving on to our board matters topics, we have three. I will do the first two. They're mainly information pieces and if people have questions, please feel free to ask. Cincinnati Preschool Promise has reached out to us regarding scheduling the next CPP, CPS collaborative meeting. And as you all know, we haven't done one in quite a while and it is their turn to post. They, they've said, they've put out a tentative date, which seems to work for a lot of the people who need to be there. And of course, we need to be there, but I need for people to check their calendars to see if October 26 works for people. So their leadership and our leadership can be there. We need our leaders here to check to see if you are able to attend. I'm sorry. We, it usually, we usually meet at six, but we would have to verify that. Now, the other piece to this is they're asking us if they can use our space. Now, it's a lot of people to try to get up on here, but I'm open to ideas and thoughts about whether or not, if, if we can accommodate them, what people's thoughts are about that. And then, of course, I'll be in touch with their board president, Dr. Owens, to talk about, to get the agenda prepared. And so we will be asking you all to contribute to any agenda topics. So any questions or comments about that? Any thoughts about space, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think a, a, it's a good date for me and we could do two rows. There's enough other tables and what have you. So, and I don't know if we like to all sit together or do we inter, intertwine? I can't remember how we do it, but you could do two more rows and I think that would, I mean, one more row and that would accommodate.
Okay, so we will work that out physically. I mean, this is all usable space, so we might be able to push back a little bit and come up.
Yes.
So October 26, work for Ms. Bowers, Mr. Messer? Okay, great. So we'll confirm that with them. And then I will certainly be in touch with Dr. Owens and we'll have our staff reach out to inform Ms. Brooks, so she at least knows where we are with that. And then we'll be asking for agenda items and of course, you know, the way we do it, both parties add agenda items and then Dr. Owens and I will get together and kind of prioritize what those are. Okay. Wonderful. All right. So the next topic, again, similar to the first one, is about our board work session. As you all know, that is Saturday, October 16. The plan is to have the meeting from 8:30 to 2:00, like we typically have with lunch provided. It will be, it really is a work session. Right now, we have two very big items and I will be asking people to contribute agenda items and then we'll prioritize those items. I also want to say that we probably will have some time dedicated solely to board development, which is why we have these work sessions on Saturday, so we can do that. And we'll be asking your input on that as well. So any questions about that session, Ms. Bolton?
A comment, and then Mr. Lindy was going to be talking about this and perhaps many already know this, but the Alma folks for our superintendent search would like some of that time on Saturday, on that Saturday. I believe the director herself is willing and wanting to fly in for that from Fargo. And I don't know yet what all that would entail, but it would be one of the things she, she would be doing and I think that would give us an opportunity to accelerate and jumpstart the effort. So whatever agenda items else might be there.
Okay.
That would be one of them as well.
Okay. I'll, I'll talk with Mr. Lindy.
Please do.
Okay. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I just, I have my last match for my Mighty Blue Sharks. So there will be, I just need to probably be gone for about 30 minutes for us to go win and then I'll be right back. So that'll be right in the middle of the meeting. So I, I just have to make sure we finish the season strong, so.
Duty calls. Duty calls, right?
Madam President, I have a special request of Member Messer.
Yes, Mr. Messer?
I have a special request for Member Messer that as the coach of those mighty, mighty Sharks, I do want you to, as you did at the finance meeting, wear your coaching outfit. And we probably should all wear the colors of that tee.
What are the colors?
Turquoise blue.
Turquoise blue, okay.
Just so we know, we're free in a push, so we're in good shape.
Good.
Mighty, mighty.
Okay, cool. Alrighty, okay, so you'll be getting more information about and questions for your feedback and your input onto these agendas. All right, okay, the final item on board topics is Ms. Bolton, I believe it's yours, the Sorda Board Metro Administration Business Community Relationship with Cincinnati City Council.
Yeah, sorry about the title, but tried to get a number of things in there for what I hope is a very short couple of statements. As we've known since the summer, when Metro changed the plans and eliminated the extra routes, our staff and our families have been making all kinds of adjustments to the school day, to their own time, to their own travel time, their own opportunities as families and kids within those families. And I want to congratulate the school staff that's found ways to accommodate certain issues that have arisen as a result. However, I think we need to assure the community that we are continuing to ask and requiring, I think, a meeting with the Metro folks and also trying to communicate to the Sorda Board our concerns about what is, what has resulted from the Metro plan. And I would encourage us to generate the kinds of statistics and data that would inform us, the board, as to what the real cost has been, both financially, instructional time, risk management and what have you. And I would hope, I know that we've had some issue having, making the date for this meeting, that even the Finance and Budget Committee of City Council really pushed us to have a meeting with Metro. And I think we need to make sure that that happens and hope that as our superintendent is trying so hard and getting less response than we would like from the CEO from Metro, it might be important for the superintendent and whomever to stress that the board is committed to having this kind of meeting. And also, more particularly, the board is, would be committed to having some answers as to what the future looks like so that we can make the plan. So I just want to say in public that we are encouraging the superintendent to keep working on that efforts to create that meeting as asked by our city council folks, rightfully so. Also to stand by our students and families regarding the restoration of these routes. And then also, perhaps as a board, possibly to need to have a public comment regarding the future that Sorda and Metro see for our students. And maybe internally for us, possibly to have more information about this situation and the impact, even if we have to do it within a fact finding as a board. So I just, I know the public is wondering if we're still fighting for the kids and still want the restoration. There's lots of things going on. But my hope is that the board will be supportive of emphasizing the need, at least for that meeting and a public effort on Sorda as a metro's part as to the future, as well as us agreeing in some form or other with them regarding the fifth year of this contract. And then also maybe internally a serious fact finding so all the different board committees aren't generating any kind of redundancy.
If I would, thank you, Ms. Bolton. I'm just putting this out there for your consideration and it's at the board's will whether or not we do this. I have been in contact with Mr. Kessie, and I am happy to reach out to encourage him to respond to the letter. I think what you are speaking to, Ms. Bolton, you kind of formed an agenda here for what that meeting would look like. And I think that it's very clear. We've been very clear about what our position is. And we did commit to city council that we would have this one last meeting. But I think the way you framed it in terms of, well, what does our future look like? And what's possible and what's doable? I think to me, that's a perfect, that was a perfect agenda topics. So if you all, tentatively, I'm just saying, but if you all are okay with me reaching out to him, I'm happy to do that.
I know I am. I think that the superintendent has been very diligent.
I know she has.
Very determined.
Right.
But again, you know, well, it's not responded in the way that we would hope. So I think maybe from you, and certainly the superintendent can brief you on all the things.
Yes, absolutely.
So that'd be great.
And if that's, everybody on board with that? Are we okay with that? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we'll move on to our resolutions.
Madam President, Mr. Lindy has joined us. I don't know if you wanted to do the, a little bit about the superintendent search.
Can he do it under inquiries and updates?
That'd be great.
Yeah, okay, yeah. We'll keep the flow going, but you'll.
That's great.
All right.
President Jones.
Okay, yes.
Can I, thank you so much, everybody. It's nice to see you all. We had a life cycle Jewish event this evening. Kept me from being here when I wanted to be, but I'm excited to be here. And this is on Sorda that we're just doing right now. Did we discuss at all the data we received from Sorda at all?
No.
Is it timely and appropriate for me to ask one question about it? Should I hold it?
You could ask your question. Ask your question.
Great. And very, very briefly, we received some analysis that we have requested from Metro on what the student experience was like this year, how long the waits were, how long the rides were, how long kids were having to walk to bus stops. And I wanted to say, on the one hand, thank you because it was great to see that. I think on the other hand, there's a really important piece of information we're still missing. At least I haven't seen it, and I want to know if somebody else may have it. And I don't know what it is. But the other part of that request was how does that compare to what it used to be? Again, it's really hard to look at the numbers that they shared and know, are we in a better place or are we in a worse place than we were last year? That was just the thing I wanted to ask about.
Okay, I think Ms. Bolton alluded to this. She mentioned a fact finding opportunity where we could ask all the questions we needed to know that might be a part of that fact finding piece. So we can talk some more about what that would look like.
Sounds awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Moving on to resolutions, Ms. Bolton, please present the following resolution.
Gladly, thank you very much. Resolution approving students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the school year 2122. I submit and hope for approval.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yep.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Morosky isn't here, so a policy member, Mr. Lindy, can you present that?
In 15 seconds. Thank you, President Jones. I would like to introduce motion on 0150, organization, amending board policy. I present that on behalf of Mike Morosky as written.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I do have a discussion. I thought it was a good, I thought the revisions were good. I did have a question because what's missing in there, and I don't know whether it should be or not. I'm looking for board direction on that. We didn't, we don't, in the organization piece, we don't talk at all about the need for board planning and development. So I think if we could put, add a line or some semantics around the fact that we do board planning and development in a work session, whatever, at least twice a year or something, I don't even know where to put it. So, but I just thought that it was important to state that because we did, when we decided to do board planning and development a number of years ago, we did pass a resolution for it somewhere. So are people okay with that? So it would be, we would be accepting, passing this with revisions and addendants, revisions.
Yes, with, as a revised version, it probably could fit within what we are adding tonight with passage, which is the responsibilities of the full board.
That would be fine.
We could add a sentence there that would end up being, I think, letter G and responsibility of the board to meet at least twice annually for board development and planning.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I would ask that the policy committee members take that back for your, just to make sure it gets inserted.
I think we could certainly do that. I also think we could do that right now. And just, is that okay with you, though? I don't want it to rush.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion maker and second.
Motion is made, motion is made to add a statement regarding the board's planning and development work sessions. And we are adding that to under item G.
Yes. It would be the new, I guess, the new G or the old G, I can't remember.
Great.
Oh, this is tough. But it's the other responsibilities of the full board.
Other responsibilities of the full board.
To meet at least twice annually in order for board development and future planning.
Okay, great. All right. Any further discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, please present the next resolution.
Thank you. And this is the one that's kind of long in the making, but we'll keep it short tonight. A resolution amending board policy, board employee communication, professional staff. I submit this new policy and hope for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, any discussion? Again, go ahead, Ms. Bates.
I have a question. Why didn't you just combine the two policies?
Because they are, they're the same wording, that's.
Yeah, I'd just say for.
Professional and certificate.
Yeah, just a question.
I'm not opposed to that. Maybe General Counsel can tell us why it might be needed to be, to be do both. Come on down, come on down. They've been separate, but I don't know if there's any reasoning for that.
Or if they, if there's a reason why they shouldn't be, it should be at least documented in each document which one is for.
There's, there's not a reason specifically. There are two series of policies. There's a, I believe, a 3,000 series and a 4,000 series. I don't have it in front of me. The 3,000 series is certificated employees. The 4,000 series is classified, but it's no objection from us for this to apply to all of them. And try to combine those two chapters of policies.
I would recommend that.
I have another question.
Okay, well, first, are folks, are okay with combining those two? Okay.
I'll just say that'll be a process over the course of, to combine all of them over the, as we review this HR series, we can, we can go through that and make those, consolidate those two.
I'm sure, I'm second with what Legal Counsel has said, that this could be the first that we try to do that so that we have, our staff is not so separated between certificated and classified. I think that's a good move. But that would have to be, we'd have to be pretty consistent in doing that. So I'm okay with doing it if we're gonna make it a habit and make it a goal.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
This, this probably doesn't pertain in particular to these policies, but isn't certificated an obsolete term? Isn't it the license?
Yeah, and I said certificated, but I didn't mean.
Yeah, but we use certificated all over the place. And that's obsolete. We use it in our superintendent's report. And I, I'm not sure if it appears in the policies. I haven't reviewed the policies in a while. But that would be my, another.
Consideration for.
Yeah, for her policy and also for administration. So we don't look like we're operating back in the 1960s.
Well, I, a quick personal story. When I was teaching and among the most senior people teaching, when the district decided to change the terminology from certificated to licensed, so don't do this in seniority listing, I became the least senior. So you can maybe change it here and this, but be careful when you start to change it in personnel matters because I have a certificate, I don't have a license. So all those are categories, so it's dangerous to do it. But in this sense, I think it's a great idea. Let's get with the current language.
But pick your up. Hold on. I, I think the recommendation is to at least have a discussion in policy about it. So I think everything that people are saying, we can take that back to policy and ask them to just consider that. So thank you for that. Okay, so the next resolution is the Board Policy 4112, where we just said we were going to combine them. So I don't know that we need to approve the same language. Okay, I think that's it for resolution. Do we? You didn't vote on 3112, so are you voting on? I'm sorry. Are you voting on a combined tonight? Yes, with revisions, 3112, we are, I mean, we need to do roll call vote?
Revised version.
Of the revised language to combine 3112 and 4112. Okay, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Superintendent Amite, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Rob. I would like to open the superintendent's report with an invitation to the Rockdale Urban Garden Reville. It will take place September 30th at 2:45 to 5:15, I'm sorry, 5:00 PM. The one acre space will include vegetables, fruit trees, herbs, flowers, and native plants. And I want to give a special shout out to our partners, the Cincinnati Zoo, Cincinnati Children's Hospital, Red's Community Fund, and PNG. Student vaccinations are available. With our partnerships with the Cincinnati Health Department, we'll be offering vaccinations for students 12 and older. And it will take place Wednesday, September 29th through October 1st. Be on the lookout for emails and robocalls for more information. And students must have a signed vaccine consent form. And lastly, we published our Super 60 segment in September, and midterms have concluded. And we are on our way with parent teachers conferences. So I want to let our community know and our families know to please sign up for your conferences. One of the things that we've learned last year that we don't have to do conferences in person. You can also do conferences virtually. Lastly, there has been a change. October 8th, staff vaccine policy goes into effect. This is a one-week extension due to technology issues. That concludes my report, and I also submit the written report for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised superintendent recommendation?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates? Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner? Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates? Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, are there any inquiries and updates? Yes, Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I'll do this as quickly as I can for everyone and I want to send around this one hard copy. Thank you, Phyllis, for running this. Ms. Bolton and I have been in touch with our search forum, the Alma Advisory Group, and are, I think, well on our way to executing the search plan that we discussed as a group. And I wanted to share just a couple of updates with the board members and with the public. I think the most important is that in this next phase, the most important part of this is around community engagement. And I think one of the real selling points of this firm was the care that they take and the thoughtfulness they have when it comes to aligning as a community on what we're looking for in our next leader. And so I want to highlight a couple of things that are coming up. There will be, the current plan is to have three community gatherings in different parts of the city. Tentative dates are on there, October 19th, 20th and 26th. And Monica from the Alma Advisory Group has been in touch with Krista and her team and they're already working on a plan to advertise these, I think, pretty aggressively through social media, radio, robocalls, to make sure people really know about these and can get there. In addition to those community gatherings, those are open to anyone. The current plan is to have some specific focus groups with key groups of stakeholders that'll include students, teachers, principals, union leaders, district partners and funders, others. And I think this is open to being shaped by people who are here tonight. If you have an idea about a particular group that you want to make sure gets a focus group here, you can share that with me, with Eve or directly with Monica. And then lastly, there's going to be a community survey. So three different ways of trying to get front end input on the profile for our next leader, all of which will be coming in the coming weeks. So thank you, everyone, again, for submitting your availability for the one-on-one meeting with Alma. And I haven't entertained questions, but that's really just an update.
Okay, I do have a question. It was a little confusing about the one-on-one meeting, meetings, what is the window in terms of the availability of Alma to meet with people? And because on that document it said September 29th through October 1st.
I think they'll be very flexible and work around you. I think, I think the thing that matters is before, before we have a profile for what we're looking for, they want to have a one-on-one conversation with each other. And I think they'd rather do that well than rush the timing on that.
Okay.
Does that work okay?
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Okay, any other inquiries or updates? Are there any assignments? Ms. Bolton?
I'm just assigning the, to the president of the, reaching out to both the preschool folks and also to the Sorda folks after she's received some guidance from our superintendent as to where we actually are on the, on the Metro one.
Thank you, will do. Any other assignments? Having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned.
We did it, we did it.